Um, increase that by quite a bit, so. Um, so we'll get that going, so if anybody has any questions, was that not recorded before?
Yeah.
No.
It's all right, just keep going. Got to hit the button, I didn't think of it. Oh, well.
We may have to start over.
I don't think so. I don't know why we started over, it's still a public meeting.
Okay.
You don't have to record it.
Okay. So anyway, that's going to be up and we'll get some advertising out for that, too. That's my fault, they moved the button to in front of me and I didn't push it. Still early in the year, I'm not used to pushing the button for the meeting, I apologize. Ah, it's embarrassing, sorry. And then the second thing I'd like to bring up is just to thank you to our EMS crews, you know, here in Casson for assisting with the situation in Manorville. Well, as all, we'd like to extend our thank you to everybody who was there. I got calls that morning and, you know, I stay away from that stuff, but then I got sent videos later. You know, we had police officers from the city of Casson who, I mean, we had people that saved lives that day, jumping on a ladder, climbing in the window before the fire department was there and, you know, it's stuff you see on TV that you think happens in other places, but this was, you know, two miles from home or right next door to some other people and, you know, watching the videos, uh, we can't thank you guys enough, Josh, for everything you and your department does, the fire department, um, for being there for us and, I know we were pretty tough on the budget sometimes and we give you a hard time on different training, but boy, I tell you what, when, uh, when the training was needed, all the people jumped right into action and did what they needed to do, so, extend your thanks to the rest of the department and, um, I've already said something to Joe and his crew, so. You know, a lot of times the fire department, one of the kind of things we just talked about at the auxiliary meeting a week before, was how few actual structure fires, some of the fire department staff we have today, you don't, you don't see that many structured fires and then ironically, you know, just a few days later, there's a structured fire they're never going to forget, so. From what I understand, from everybody that was there and the feedback I got, everybody did their jobs perfectly and saved lives that day, so thank you very much. Appreciate that. Public forum, I don't have any cards, Linda, do you? Okay, public hearing, committee reports, recommendation for planning commissioner regarding ordinance language update of variances.
So Monday night, the planning commission did take up two different public hearings. Uh, the first one was regarding the variance regime policy, or the way we do that. And you should have received information or you should have been able to do that. Um, I think they had a good discussion, it was, uh, something where we thought we wanted to sort of, uh, concrete that concept into the code. It's always kind of been an assumed authority, but we felt like it maybe laid it out better if it was actually out for people to review. And I don't know, Dwayne or Lonnie, if you have anything else on that, but I mean, that's, that's pretty much what it is. Basically, it's just as going to authorize the council upon the request of the, um, property owner who has a variance, if they'd like, if they are requesting that, they can make a alteration to that variance. It allows us a little bit more flexibility and just sort of formalizes that concept.
I like it, lays it out, they can request it, council can request it, okay. Any questions for planning and zoning on that? As you're planning and zoning, okay, entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Next one is recommendation for planning commission regarding ordinance language update to the drive-through businesses.
Uh, so this was one that also came up recently and it was part of a change in the code that the city did last year. Uh, previously, there had been a ability for businesses in the central business district to have a, uh, drive-through, uh, with certain conditions and things like that. When the code was approved, that was taken out. And there was some good reasoning behind that, there were some reasons they want to focus pedestrian traffic downtown, that sort of thing, but, uh, after consideration, um, I think the planning commission felt like that might be overly strict. And so what they'd like to do is go back to a way where they can request a conditional use permit and we can do it by case-by-case basis where someone would come and request that. Um, planning commission could look at conditions that would be set to provide safety and security for residents and pedestrians, but they would also, you know, allow for that sort of operation. And one of the reasons is, of course, we want to support the business community. We don't want to take away abilities for them to operate businesses. So I think after the planning commission reviewed it, they felt that it was appropriate to change this back to what, you know, would have been historically, you know, three months ago would have been the policy.
Okay.
Uh, you have anything, Dwayne?
Nope. I think it pretty much cleared up the particular zones, uh, conditions that, whether it was approved with standards or whether it required a conditional use permit. And essentially, it was the downtown area that required the conditional use permit. The highway commercial and things like that, it could be approved with standards and not require the conditional use permit, so.
I appreciate planning and zoning taking that up, too, because it's one of those things that comes up, right, you know, no fault of anybody, but, business sells, building's vacant, somebody else comes and buys a building, put their business in, previous business had a drive-through and now the rules say, oh, you can't have a drive-through. Ah, it just makes you want to pull all your hair out thinking about that, so I appreciate you guys putting that together and.
The caveat is going to be the queuing of traffic.
Sure.
So, I mean, we may have to revisit this down the road. Hopefully, they have such a successful business that it becomes a problem that we have to address, but,
Right.
As of right now, we don't think so.
Yep, okay, thank you guys for doing that, appreciate it. Any other questions, comments on that? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries.
I understand we need a second motion for the summary.
Summary publication, yeah.
A little bit on both of them, yeah.
Okay, we can do them separate or can I do them together?
Well, you can do them together.
Okay, entertain a motion for a summary publication on both. This is, we're passed. So moved, thank you, have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Lonnie, all in favor?
Aye.
Here, I oppose, motion carries. Um, EDA annual report for your information there.
Yeah, and, uh, please let me know if you have feedback, the EDA, uh, you know, in reality, it's kind of funny, we think 2020 was kind of a tough year, it was a slow year, but, really, they did a lot of good work last year, even with the planning process that they had. And I think the council members from the EDA could testify to that, that really they did do a number of things. You can see the loans that were given out, the, uh, the support for business, a number of businesses in town here. A hundred and thirty-nine thousand, uh, four hundred and thirty-five were awarded to local small business and nonprofits. Um, so, you know, the participation in that, you know, really affects our local businesses and it affects employment, too, because these are jobs in our community that were kind of preserved, so. Um, you know, moving forward, they continue to hope to have another good year this year and, you know, if there are, is there a feedback, though, let us know, because, obviously, they're interested in working on priorities for the council, too.
What I mentioned at EDA, I'll mention here, is I like this report and I hope that's something we get every year, because there's things that we, you do in different communities that you forget. I mean, it'd be even nice on some of the other committees sometimes to have a layout of what you've done, because sometimes you kind of forget some of it.
Well, I can bring that feedback back to some of the other committees as well. You know, I do try to give updates in my reports to sort of what we're working on at times, but, uh, for example, like EMS and things like that, we definitely could do a curve of a mini annual report with, uh, with some things, that's not a bad point.
It's just, it's just helpful. It's a nice reference, too, down the road.
Perfect, anything else? We don't need to approve that, it's.
No, it's just.
On the old business, automated metering infrastructure.
Well, I invited Jared, our electric supervisor, here. You should have received a summary that he wrote up for me here today, as well as the information that you received electronically, uh, through Dropbox about the different proposals. Right now, we're looking at, we've been looking at four of them and Jared, you jump in any time. Um, I tried to kind of brief you last meeting about what this sort of is and it's just a, it's basically a move from the AMR, which is, was a move from reading meters by hand, you know, historically, people walked around and read them and then we moved to kind of a drive-around. Um, this is sort of moving into the next phase, which is automated reading electronically via signals that are spread through a neural network. And, um, we have these four proposals, uh, you know, and basically, I think what, to synopsize it a little bit, is that we found that two of the four are more advantageous, because they don't require the complete replacement of our current system in the initial phase. So it reduces the impact, the financial impact especially, at least in the immediate future. So you can kind of see what, uh, what Jared's got there, um, you know, the costs of a complete system, you know, replacement are substantial and it would definitely impact the rate structure, which we would have to put forward in order to implement. Uh, we feel like we may be able to handle some of these other proposals internally and through some smaller, you know, rate adjustments. What I'd like to do is if we can just get feedback from you tonight and then we'll continue to refine our review of the two proposals, um, the TAN, TANALIS and the OATI, which are the two that don't require the complete replacement initially. And then I'm anticipating that we may have one of those present to us on March 6th, the one we've identified that we feel is the best option. Cost-effective, user-friendly, that's something we'd also like to do is, we're going to be able to integrate this software solution so that folks can get it on their apps, you know, they can get an app, they can look at their information real-time online, which is going to be a huge step for our, especially for our electric utility, but also it's going to work with our water utility, which is another big thing. Um, so I don't, Jared, if you want to just discuss it a little bit.
Um, yeah, basically, with our current solution, which cut down on labor tremendously, uh, from what I understand, the whole city used to be involved in meter reading for a day or two, walking around with books and manually reading. The next step in that was the drive-by system, uh, which uses, we're currently using Itron, uh, ERT technology, electronic read technology. And the next step is AMI and what AMI allows us to do, that the current drive-by technology doesn't. Right now, we're reading meters once a month, that tells us how much people used and not much else. Uh, any of these AMI solutions are similar in the end functionality, there's little differences between all of them, but what they do is they take a reading at a minimum once a day, um, and you can get them up to every hour, every fifteen minutes. And what that allows us to do, uh, we get a snapshot of the system on every endpoint in town, so every meter in town, once they're all changed out. And if you're getting a read every hour on a water meter and all of a sudden that water meter starts registering a bunch, you can set a threshold and it'll flag it and say, hey, there's a possible leak at this house and we can call the customer and say, hey, why don't you check your, you know, water heater? Why don't you check your, your softener? Electronic reads, if somebody goes and pulls their meter and starts monkeying with stuff, we can go ahead and, again, get a flag for that. We can shut the liquid customers off remotely and we have a few in town that put their dogs out every read day, so we can't get in their backyard to pull their meter. We get back there one time, change their meter out, will never need to go back there again. Customer move-outs, every day I have a person that takes an hour or two to drive around and get, you know, move-in, move-outs, daily reads. That is all accomplished because that read came in an hour ago and you just use that and it's almost enough. Uh, there's some advantageous stuff on the polyface side of it, we can get demand readings for people. I believe it's also a future positioning thing and this is the way the industry's going, uh, the whole electric industry and people that need meters read. With time-of-use stuff or when people get EV cars, um, we're going to be able to monitor when people are using electricity and charge them at a different rate, which is something that places that are, they're anticipating and it's being pushed, a pretty significant penetration of EV vehicles. It's something that, you know, if it happens, and there's people that think it will and there's people that think it won't, if it does, we want to be positioned to offer our customers the best possibility. Without diving too deep into it, the one solution that Tim and I have really looked over and hopefully you'll be hearing from the gentleman, uh, from TANALIS on March 6th, it gives us some functionality we don't have right now. The system comes with an outage, a map basically of everywhere we put a meter. In town, it's an overlay of a G.I.S. map. It shows what meters are communicating with what and how they're getting back to the thing, it also does what's called a last gasp, so if the power goes out on someone's house, a lot of times, we'll have a text alert, it'd be in the utility and we'll know before they even call us. If there's a larger outage, we'll see that outage on that map and we can go directly to wherever that feed is or wherever that next protective device is. Where right now, we come in and we look for blinking lights on the line where the, and if it's snowing and a lot of the stuff's underground, we're trying to go and dig out, you know, boxes that have lights to tell us where the, where the fault current has come from and try to isolate things that way. Right now, we're paying a yearly fee for what we have. Like anything else these days, there's different technologies for everything. And there's fees for all of that as well, but I believe this will allow us not only to have a more hardened system, that has more customer functionality as well. I think it'll, it'll really help us, uh, in the electric and water department to identify some of these issues, you know, if trees are brushing the line, well, if it's telling us that we're having voltage sags right here, we can drive that line instead of drive every line in town trying to find that, because if it's all connected, we see it everywhere until we can, can drill it down that far. So it's, it's the right time to do it. Like Tim was saying, I believe the two full AMI solutions, uh, they require every single electric and water meter in town to change out. That means we have to get in every single basement, every single business and change those out in order for that to become a, a single, uh, non-drive-by system. Uh, the two other options, TANALIS and OATI, uh, basically, we change out electric meters, which involves about a ten-minute process of pulling people's meter out of their house, letting them know we're going to do it, putting it in and then it starts reading, um, then there's some backend stuff we'd have to do, obviously, to connect it. Those meters read the existing, the earth meters that we're using now, so we do not have to replace every meter in town. Itron believes that we can replace about seven hundred and sixty-five meters, give or take, uh, put up some collectors, maybe some repeaters to get hard-to-reach ones. And we would be reading everything in town with one, here it is. About, I believe it's about fifteen hundred of our current water meters are a series that is too old to be read, um, by this system. We would still be driving by until those were replaced, but those meters are running out of batteries and are being replaced at a, at a rate now that in the next three to four years, they're all going to be out anyways and they will be replaced with the new series just by default. So that cost is going to happen one way or the other. It's something we might look at trying to speed up and I talked to Dave and let him know that we don't have to cut people's water off and do any massive plumbing to get these things changed out. So when we get enough electric meters out there, our guys can go and help, you know, once, scheduling's going to be the problem getting in people's houses. So if people have certain times they, they're available, we'll, we'll make it work and go help them if they're, they're undermanned in the water department. Yeah, there's, there's a lot to it, uh, it's hard to briefly summarize, it's, it's a fairly complicated process, but it's, it's one that I think, um, I think would benefit us as a utility, especially as a small utility.
Staff have been looking at this, you know, for, basically, for two, over two months now. And that's one of the reasons I want to bring it to you now, because it is a somewhat complicated issue to explain in a succinct way. But we have put a lot of research into it and I think if we can get it refined down, so we have one proposal, that, that'll be our goal, is to bring it to you, see how comfortable you are with it and then we would look to possibly implement it even this year still. So I just wanted to bring it to you, if there are any questions for Jared or myself on this?
Does it integrate with our current billing system or does it come with its own billing system?
It would integrate with the current, I believe.
Right, this particular one, Itron and TANALIS have had a, had a partnership, a legal partnership from the start. They are very, 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 very familiar with FCS billing, which is what the current handheld read comes in as, so they're able to convert that. I know we're also looking at possibly a new utility billing type solution that offers some of the things that we don't right now as far as email billing and, you know, text alerts and that kind of stuff, instead of going out and hanging tags on doors. But that's a, that's a separate issue, so easy answer, yes, it does.
Okay. Lonnie, anything?
I.
I'm good, all right? We'll hear what they have to say on the sixth and.
Yeah, I, you know, there's not only the expense, but there's going to be a significant cost savings in man-hours and, issues with being able to identify, I mean, that's a untrackable savings.
Right, you'd be able to fix something sooner that's.
Yeah.
Theoretically, ought to just, if they're identified quicker, could be fixed quicker.
Yeah.
People could be back.
It gives us an immediate direction to go where now we get a hundred and fifty megawatts in a big outage in a huge area of town and we have to go and find it.
Right.
And sixty percent of Casson or Bettis underground at this point, that's a lot of equipment and underground line to try to find a fault this big, you know, when, when there's a significant outage. So we are really drilling down on where we're putting indicators and getting indication for that. The Main Street extension, thank you guys for approving that, uh, once we get that opened up at the right spots, we'll have that broken up even further. That's a, that's a huge piece of what we've been looking at doing for as long as I've been here, so eight years. This solution right away, it's, it's really interesting, because it gives us the map and it says, here's where the outage is and we can probably tell by which meters went out first, if it was blinking over here and then all of a sudden the whole thing went out. It'll be a, it'll be a really helpful tool for us, plus it'll be a helpful tool for billing and for the city. I mean, you have, you have all this data now to work on and you can spend your money, we have a pretty limited budget. We can spend our money here when it comes to tree trimming, because it's, it's indicating that it's, we're getting voltage sags and then trees are hitting the line or we, you know, it's just going to give us a lot of information that we have none of at this point.
Perfect, thank you for your work on that, appreciate it and we'll hear more on the sixth. Okay, new business, resolution and supportive continued local government aid.
Uh, this is something the league has asked us to take a look at, it's a draft resolution, um, sort of a boilerplate document, but, it is something that is valuable and if the council chooses to, choose to approve it, we will forward it on to the legislators there.
I think we support local government aid.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries, administrator's report.
Sure, you've got my report on hand, um, a couple of items we've already covered tonight, obviously, the, uh, the talk about AMI and things like that. There was a budget briefing this morning and Governor Walz was involved with that for the league. And I know Nancy was able to listen and she sort of briefed me on it and it, uh, she sounded optimistic that hopefully that the state budget will be improving and so, uh, obviously, we'll be, we'll be watching that closely and hopefully, the governor's budget's out, the legislative branches do not have theirs out as of yet, so the conflict will be in the, kind of in those sets there, so we'll be kind of watching that. COVID vaccine implementation and the update there, you can see I've had a number of staff questions about it and what I've been advising staff, if they have ability to get the vaccine in their home county, then they should do so. It's sort of being implemented in chunks, you know, Homestead County right now is kind of ahead of a lot of the other counties in our area. I'm sure, obviously, it has the, the large medical, you know, presence, but, uh, they are expecting to start moving into that Phase 1C, uh, which is adults with high-risk medical conditions, so hopefully that will be speeding up. Let's see here, planning, we talked about that, election management, you've got that update. Did, did want to note that the EDA did have a sale of one of their loans, uh, the Gibbs, um, firm was sold, so that was a repayment to the EDA, so they, they did clear that loan. We had a real productive meeting and I appreciate the feedback, it was, uh, good for us to start planning, especially for the Highway 57. I don't want to lose sight of that, it's going to have a big impact on the community and the, the traffic flow and that sort of thing. And I was able to participate in the Mankato, the Minnesota State University's career day. There were four of us, uh, myself, another city administrator and then two city planners from the state of Minnesota that are alumni. Had a really good conversation with young people, uh, I think it's important to try to, uh, develop those, those folks as future leaders. We know we have a number of potential retirements over the next five years and so getting them familiar with, uh, Casson and, uh, communities, if, if I have an opportunity to look to get an intern, that's something that I certainly would bring to the council, but I, I think it could be a real positive. And we're working on some policies, Linda is, um, to be able to handle interns maybe a little bit smoother, so I appreciate that. If there's any questions on that?
Sounds good to me. Lonnie, anything?
Nope.
Thanks, Tim, appreciate it.
There's a couple of other items that we'll just highlight. This is a good read if you are having a hard time going to bed. Uh, this is a phosphorus effluent limit review, which the city undergoes on a, uh, not, not annual basis, but a regular basis. I think every three or four years, the state does one. The good news is that our limits were not changed. So the limits that we currently have were affirmed by the state, uh, which means that we do not have to make any adjustments immediately to our salt levels or phosphorus or anything like that. There are a couple of communities in our watershed, the Zumbro, you know, watershed that are, again, have some substantial impacts. The largest one is Rochester, they have, uh, obviously, they have the biggest impact, of course, on that watershed, but, um, so, yeah, if you like a read, you know, go right ahead, but the good news is no changes for us. And then I also just wanted to include, this is an example of a, what I'm hoping to implement, is a work plan. Something that I've talked to the department heads about at their meeting, at our department head meeting, um, and especially working with Charlie right now to, uh, to get an example. This is a street example from January. Basically, what I'm asking them to do is look at their task load and try to populate that so that, you know, as we have turnover, as we have folks that are, uh, sick or gone, it allows us to know what are some projects that need to be worked on every year. And also for future councils, if there are ever questions from council members, you know, what exactly, what are our guys doing? You know, I always tell the department heads, I don't plan on, I mean, our goal is not to micromanage, but sometimes it's easier for us to provide the information ahead of time, so that there aren't any questions about it. And this is, Charlie's done a good job so far of getting it to me, uh, I appreciate that, just wanted you to see, that's an example of what I hope to have and will be populating, you know, over the next year or two, so.
Okay, thank you, I like that. Thanks, Tim, appreciate it.
You bet.
Engineers' report, lateral inspection program.
All right, thank you, Mary, council, um, as part of our iron eye reduction program, uh, we've been completing the sump pump and lateral inspections. Currently, we've been completing the sump pump portion of that project, uh, we got about ninety percent of them done. Past council actions, we did not set a real hard deadline for that, so we're kind of floating out here with COVID. Uh, so the discussion tonight is starting up the lateral portion of that project. If you remember, about half the town was a sump pump only and about half the town was sump pump and a lateral. It's going to take more time for us to do lateral inspections, so, uh, we're looking at potentially, on our side of things, able to start this up in about a month, is what we kind of had penciled out. So discussion tonight for the council is, does that interest you, is that something, uh, the council is preparing to complete? Um, or do we need to maybe push that start out? Uh, the reason why we haven't done it over winter is, it's kind of hard to do during the winter, uh, tracking in some equipment and tracking snow into houses. And then secondly, the COVID, we just kind of figured we'd let things kind of slide here on our side of things, but we're preparing to, uh, start that. If you may remember our discussions and if you've gone to the cassonsump.com website, we talk about some of the COVID protocols that we've had, so. Uh, we're ready to go, um, discussion night, if, if the city's ready to go here in the next month.
I don't want to see this thing pushed and keep getting pushed.
I agree.
You need to keep on this thing if we're going to cut down our effluent, it, I think it needs to go.
Yeah.
As soon as you think it's reasonably able to be done with the weather, like you said, the spring. And then, um, again, if somebody has a big problem with the COVID, they can be pushed to the end of the line.
We've had a handful of property owners that have expressed an interest and we just said, all right, well, we'll put you, put you out there and we'll be back and touch you, uh, touch with you when we do have a hard deadline set by the council at a later date, so assuming that would be the same protocol here for the lateral inspection, so.
Yeah, I would say go.
All right, so I guess we'll be expecting it starting about a month, uh, we'll be sending out letters and whatnot. One maybe question for the council or follow-up is have another public meeting or not, if the council desires that. Uh, we had two Zoom meetings and in-person meeting, it was, uh, very, uh, poorly is the right word, but it was limited attendance, so, um, we're happy to do it again if needed. Um, just, I think that the public's had their opportunity back September, October to attend, we covered all the information, we have a, I feel a pretty robust website that everybody goes to, I'm happy to do whatever the council, um, likes to do.
Maybe once you get ready to start it, you could just bring up more detail here at a council meeting, just so people could just.
I don't think we need a public meeting again.
No, but I mean, just.
Yes, I agree.
Detail.
I agree, yep.
Yeah, I agree. The, the website handles quite a bit of it and if they have questions, they can contact you firmly and ask questions, so. So we get a handful of calls throughout the project, so. Standing operating procedure.
Okay, sounds good.
We'll get your fire back up, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, appreciate it. Personnel, recommendation for wastewater operator.
Uh, so I will let you know, we did interviews and you are aware of that. We had offered the position to candidate, uh, Josh Bendah was the one we were looking for and, uh, after he initially had, uh, you know, accepted, he then declined about a week later. So, uh, that sort of set us back a little bit, but, uh, we did have other interviews that were really good, too, and so we ended up not, um, not recommending, uh, operator two, which is initially what we had wanted to do. So we had two candidates, Josh, and then our second candidate, who was, uh, operator one was, uh, uh, there were three of them, uh, we interviewed Isaac.
Uh, we interviewed Isaac Tho, Giovanni Castiano and Jacob Reber. And they were very good in the interviews as a whole. And after we, we were unable to have that operator two approved, we, uh, went back and I, just this afternoon, um, I- Isaac Tho let me know that, uh, he was interested in the position. He was going to accept an offer for that position. So, um, he's coming to us from PeopleServe. He's actually a CASN-Manorville graduate, a resident of CASN. And, um, he's, uh, I think about twenty-one years old, young man. He's got, he's been in the field for about eight months now, he graduated last, uh, spring. Um, he's pretty excited to be here, very, uh, very interested in, you know, it's not exactly what we were anticipating. We were hoping to have that operator two, because it fills the, the gap. At the same time, you know, we do feel like if he can be aggressive and go and get his Class C license, that'll allow him to continue to move up. Um, the, the pool of candidates is not deep and that is a, that is an issue. Um, we do feel like having a, a native, um, employee is a good thing. We certainly think that may allow us to rechain him in the long run. Like I said, he's coming to us from PeopleServe, which is a company that does, a private company that does sewer plants. He works right now in Dodge Center in Claremont, so he's coming to us locally as well. So, um, basically that would be, um, the, uh, recommendation would be for Isaac Tho. He'd be starting on step one of his pay grade as operator.
Okay. Any questions for Tim on that?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Lonnie, all in favor said aye.
Aye.
Close, thank you, motion carries.
Thanks very much.
Yep, thank you.
Yeah, we'll eliminate, uh, looking at a second applicant in that, uh, department for this time being, so.
Yeah, and that's.
I had a question at the last meeting and so we'll, uh.
We don't need to discuss it then.
Don't need to worry about that.
I was going to share my opinion on that, but, okay. Okay, we're going to go to, is this going to be recorded? We're going to go to a closed session, uh, regarding some litigation, the heat of litigation, it will not be recorded. We will open the meeting when we are done. Thank you very much, thanks for coming guys, have a good night.
Before you do this, was, I missed the whole, um, approve agenda and consent agenda.
Yep.
So was the only thing on the, uh, that was added was the engineers?
The engineers report, and I just have those two items, and all of the mayor's report.
He had the wall.
The wall, foundation, the thanking the EMS.
To the EMS.
And then who made that motion and second and, or could you do it again? I, I was trying to get the meeting thing down.
Dwayne made one of them and Lonnie seconded.
Yeah, I have approved the agenda.
And I approved the Cassin agenda.
Yep, and then Lonnie seconded, yep.
I'd just like quickly to thank the council and Tim and Linda for, uh, pursuing the matter with Eric, uh, and, and putting into that, proving it's not weak. I think that's a smart move for retention. Uh, the electric pool also isn't deep when we need people and we got some good guys this last round, so I just want to say thank you guys. I don't see much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Take care of you.
Good night, Brandon.
Now, you can shut it off.
Just turn it off.
Let it pop out, there you go. Now give it a few minutes when you turn it back on.